And Smith County from the Northeast Texas Public Health District. Here with us is George Roberts, CEO of the Northeast Texas Public Health District, and our new local health authority, Dr. McGahay, to provide that update. Mr. Roberts, go ahead.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. Good morning. Thank you for letting me be here this morning. I'm George Roberts from the Northeast Texas Public Health District. Today, I'm joined by, as Judge Moran mentioned, our Smith County Health Authority, Dr. Paul McGahay. First, let me share an updated case dashboard with you. As you'll see there, we, as of yesterday, November 30th, 2020, we have a total of 9,684 COVID-19 cases in Smith County. Of these, 6,019 are confirmed cases of COVID-19, and 3,665 are probable cases. Again, refresh your memory. The confirmed cases means they've been confirmed by what's called a PCR lab test. The probable cases are confirmed by what's called an antigen test. And probably, that's the state definition there, but basically, if you come up positive on one of these quick antigen tests, the reliability of that, if you're positive, is very reliable. So, we feel that, we treat them like that we would any other case. Our recovered patient count now is 5,347, including both confirmed and probable cases. As of yesterday, there were 261 East Texans in Tyler, Texas hospitals, which is a new high. So far, we've had, during this, we unfortunately have had 199 Smith County residents who have passed away from COVID-19. And again, our condolences go out to those families who have lost a loved one to COVID-19 during this time period. So, we're now almost nine months into this journey, as we announced our first three COVID, three positive COVID-19 cases in Smith County on March 13th, 2020. So, where are we now? Well, the virus is still with us, and we must continue to take these measures in the coming days. These measures are staying home when you're sick. And that's probably the number-one thing that I, and I don't hear a lot of people talking about that, but one of the best things you can do if you've had COVID-19, if you ever had any other thing else that you may be sick with, staying home when you're sick is probably the best way to not infect other people. Number two, avoid large crowds and large gatherings. Number three, we talked about the word "social distancing," stay six feet away from each other. Number four, decrease the number of places that you go out and about. Number five, wear a mask when you're out in public. Number six, wash your hands often for 20 seconds. Seven, cover your cough or your sneeze. And clean and disinfect your surfaces, and keep your hands off your face, your eyes, your nose, and your mouth. And right now, if you haven't received your flu shot already, we were talking about this a couple of months ago, we really started pushing these out, really in September, flu shots. It's not too late to get a flu shot, and again, we do not want people to have a combination of COVID-19 and the flu. So, please, if you have not received your flu shot yet, please get that flu shot. So, again, all these measures are crucial to protect older adults and persons with underlying medical conditions, who are at risk for a more difficult struggle with COVID-19 than our healthier population. So, now, let me share a few charts with you. So, this is our, if you recall, our seven-day rolling rate, and it's the top thing, Casey, is the, that's the, whoop, that's not it, bottom. Trying to find a little, huh? Middle, there we go. So, you see right there, our rolling rate is 33.63. We're down from, when we did a press conference right before, a week ago, right before Thanksgiving, we were up around 46 then. And a lot of this has to do, I think quite frankly, with the people not necessarily getting tested right before Thanksgiving or right after Thanksgiving. So, we do fully anticipate that this number will go up. So, you see, our number today is 33.63, and our rolling rate, seven-day rolling rate average in Smith County, which is better, again. So, we're not in the red right now, but we think that we really are in the red. So, at this point, our positive case counts, as we said, are a great deal higher than when I came here back and last visited with you guys. And we're moving into more substantial and dangerous levels of community spread of the virus. So, as we've mentioned before, the rolling rate is among the best ways to closely monitor whether there's a trend over time unfolding, whether the rate is increasing, decreasing, or flattening, or so on. So, we started displaying this on our website in early October. And as we developed this guidance document, our guidance on the chart states that this graphic, she's right there, this graphic is only entitled, only intended to provide situational awareness for organizations and entities, and not as the sole indicator for decision-making in determining community spread, or to the safety of a specific organization, entity, or geographic mix. And again, we have three levels of guidance. We have the minimal, which is zero to 10 cases. We have the moderate, greater than 10, less than 35, on the rolling rate average. And again, substantial, over 35. And again, this rolling rate is, so again, 33.6, what we say is 33.63 Smith County residents, 33.63 per 100,000 Smith County residents have been tested positive for COVID-19 in the last seven days. That's what that's saying right there. So, here's a ZIP Code map. You see there the ZIP Codes in Smith County. Our higher rates, looks like the highest rate right now is in the 75709. And again, that's not numbers of cases, it's the rate per 10,000 population. So, that's the highest population group, the highest rate in the area of 75709. But you see blues in the other, most of the areas of Smith County there. And you get over to, you know, other counties in our seven-county region. This is the net health COVID-19 daily new cases in our seven-county jurisdiction. And you'll see here, the, you see back in July, remember when the rates went up back in July? And then we kind of, we flattened out, really in August, kind of went back down, and started creeping up in October. You see the huge spikes we had in the month of November. Again, it's dropped back down a little bit right now, but we do anticipate, we're concerned that that number's going to start kicking back up again. Again, based on what's happening in our hospitals right now. So, that is a big concern for us. Smith County kind of mirrors the same thing you saw on this whole seven-county thing there. You see the rates right there, our biggest day, you know, again, some of our biggest days match what we saw back in July, and actually exceeded what we had back in July, when we were very concerned as well. This is our hospitalization number. Again, this is what, this is a key area right here that we want to really pay attention to, is we were, yesterday, we were at 261, which is the highest number we've had so far. But you kind of see how the rates, we were kind of tracked along right here at this level, and then it's really bumped up, really in the month of November, how these numbers have really gone up. This is a very important graph right here. So, this is the percent capacity, percent hospital capacity and combined hospital data for our RACG. You know, regional advisory areas, it's our trauma RAC. And it's basically a 14-county area, which includes Smith and Gregg County, and several others in our region. And what they're looking at, per the Governor's Order, Executive Order GA 32, in areas with high hospitalizations, any business establishment that otherwise would have a 75% occupancy, such as our restaurants, or operating limit, may operate at only 50% if we go over this level for a seven-day period. So, if it's over 15%, this number's over 15% for seven days, the Governor's Order kicks in.
And George, let me stop you there, because as we've been talking about this and looking at the trends over the past month, they've been slowly creeping up, this percentage of capacity in the hospitals to the number of COVID patients. And we are now, I think, on our second day, over 15%. And if the trends continue, it likely is going to be that in a week, we will be at that seven-day mark. Would you agree with that?
I agree.
And the other thing I think that's really important for the public to understand at that point is, you know, it's, we won't be, we won't be enhancing any restrictions, it's just going to be a natural, natural consequence of the Governor's GA 32 order for that to happen, from the 75 to 50% capacity. But the practical aspect that I want to emphasize is, that decrease, the percentage decrease, doesn't happen overnight. So, the increase didn't happen overnight, it was a slow increase. And to get it back down below 15% for more than seven days, so that we can have additional capacity in our restaurants, additional freedoms under GA 32, it's going to take some long-term action on the part of our citizens to make sure to make, and continue to make, healthy individual choices, as far as wearing a mask, and keeping their distance, and washing their hands, all the things we've been talking about.
Correct.
That's what I really want to emphasize is, this percentage doesn't jump up and down every day. It slowly increases, and it slowly decreases. And once we get in that seven-day time period where we've been over it for 15%, it's going to take some work by the community to get below 15%. And it's going to take some time to get back below the 15% for seven consecutive days. Would you agree with that?
I agree with that, because that follows, go back to your, let's just look right here. That trend we just saw, talked about, follows this right here. So, you see, as people, as people are diagnosed, you don't typically go get diagnosed with COVID-19 and go straight to the hospital. You typically, there's a couple of days, you're feeling bad, and then you have to go through hospitalization. So, that trend follows this trend right here.
Right, there's a lag, yeah, there's a lag, because you have this time period where it's really a matter of decision-making, individuals and businesses making decisions. And then the lag of those decisions results in either an increase or decrease in positive cases. And then there's a lag before you get to those that are hospitalized. And then there's a lag before we actually see that unfortunately result in either an increase, or fortunately, a decrease of deaths on the back end, whichever way the trend is going. So, there are specific phases that come out on the backside of this, that start with the individual choices of our citizens, correct?
Correct.
All right.
So, does that, so, make sure that that, does that make sense to y'all? So, basically, we're on day, as of yesterday, we were day two of this right here. So, this was 15.2, it's actually, yesterday, it was 15.78. So, it went up yesterday, and we did the charts right before this. So, it dropped, November 28th, it actually dropped, we were on a five-day, we were looking at when, actually tomorrow, it actually dropped just slightly below 15% on Saturday. So, with the seven-day rolling thing kicked back up again. So, again, that's, this is the, this is an outgrowth of people testing positive, though. Again, your, people test positive, it's a few days, and then they potentially go to the hospital. So, that's, it's kind of a rolling thing there. So, people are infected, and we say typically takes, from the time you're exposed, two to 14 days to develop symptoms.
So, George, let's make this really clear, because everybody that tests as positive does not go to the hospital.
Correct.
You have to be really severely sick in order to go to the hospital.
That's correct, that's correct.
Because I've had people get tested, they go to the ER, they, you know, they send them back home. So, we need to make it clear so people understand, just because you get tested positive, you don't always go to the hospital.
That's absolutely, and actually, in some cases, Commissioner Hampton, there's people who are, they test positive and have no symptoms whatsoever.
Right.
So, that's, and that's, that's one of the reasons why we'd say about, talk about the social distancing, the wearing a mask in public, et cetera, because I may have it, you may have it, and we may be exposing people and have no clue that we're sick at all. So, that's, that's, that's an excellent point. So, yeah, just because you have COVID-19 doesn't mean you're going to the hospital.
George, I've got one question, and I'm just going to move on, I'm sure, but if, in the RAC area, in our area, what's our, if you know, and if you don't, that's fine, too, the average hospital stay for our COVID patients? Not, you know, the average time that they're...
I don't know the, do you know that answer, Dr. McGahay?
I would say a week to 10 days, but that's, I can look that up.
I was just curious, because we've all known people...
Yeah, we'll check that, I don't know the answer, but it's a good, it's a good...
Some seem to stay, you know, personally, we all know people that have been in some, you know, short time, and then some extended period of times with bad, you know, outcomes. But I was just curious if we were tracking an average, so we can kind of, you know, know where this was going to end up, when we see the front numbers, you can kind of know roughly where it's going to be.
Yeah, it could be, you know, once somebody goes to the hospital, it could be several, several days, I think it's, I've heard eight days, I've heard, if you really get on, the big deal is if you get on a ventilator, then you've really extended your time in the hospital.
Right.
But we'll find that out for you, that's a good question.
Thank you, George.
Yeah. So, moving forward here, let me just show you the racial/ethnic mix here. Hasn't really necessarily changed that much, this is our entire net health area. Again, for the, for those, the racial/ethnic mix, for those that we know have tested positive, roughly 57% of the people are white, 17.2% are African-American, just under 25% are Hispanic, the rest, the other 1% are Native American or Asian. And then for Smith County, it's a little bit less in white, a little bit less in the white, roughly just 49%. But look at the growth in Hispanic, 31.4%. African-Americans, 18.2%. And Pacific Islander and Asian is just a little over 1% there. Here's the net health COVID-19 age distribution. What's fascinating here, you remember, I've talked in here, you've heard me talk a lot about, it's the 21 to 30 crowd, right? You've heard that a lot. Look how this, when I looked at this yesterday, this is kind of the first time it really hit me, that this is really flattening out here, as you see. You know, the 11 to 20, it's still, in our whole net health area, it's still, the 21 to 30 crowd is the winner, but you have the other categories that are kind of slowly trying to catch up here. So, the age distribution is not like what it was when we first started this thing. And then if you look at Smith County, the 31 to 40 crowd has now exceeded the 21 to 30 crowd. So, again, that flattening, talking about flattening of a curve there, it's really, that's really changed quite a bit. Deaths by race, where the value is known, or where it actually is known, in net health, our entire area, there have been 236 people who have passed away, that are white, who have passed away from COVID-19. Racial mix unknown, 203, one Native American, 26 Hispanic, 55 African-American. Smith County, 23 African-American, 10 Hispanic, 92 unknown, and 74 white. And then here's the age distribution. Again, the age is still, you'll see here our bubbles, you know, you kind of see here, there's been a few deaths, you know, to, you know, a few deaths in this area right here, but your hand, most of your people, 55, 60, a lot older, it's really your more older, your older, more medically infirm person is passing, this is hitting the hardest right And now, Dr. McGahay's going to come up here. So, Dr. McGahay has a few slides relative to the vaccine, and then I'll come back and a few of the comments, and then we'll do some more Q and A. Dr. McGahay?
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Judge Moran, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to be here today. I was going to talk about a new development, not really a new development, really entering the next phase of the pandemic, and that's the advent of the vaccine that will be upon us in the very near future. I think if you listen to the radio or look at the news, that's the top story, it was at 9:00 on my way here, about the vaccines that are being released. But let me just kind of give you a brief overview of that. In a sense, we are in a phase now where we need to really ramp up those social distancing procedures, we don't need to be sharing air with a lot of people, and really encouraging that until we get the vaccine. And we will be rolling out in increments, but there is some hope, there is a light at the end of the tunnel. The vaccines are showing to be very effective, so we're in that gap now between what we're doing, per usual, and the vaccine rolling in in coming weeks and months. As you can see from this slide, there are about 190 candidate vaccines, are going through various trials, phase one, phase two, phase three, which is just the scientific studies that they go through. And a couple have emerged out of those phase-three vaccine trials at present. And I don't know if you have the clicker or not.
Sorry, ran off with it.
There you go. And you're hearing a lot of the news about the Moderna vaccine and the Pfizer/Biontech vaccine. These are the first two that have gone through those phase-three trials. They've been shown to be about 90-plus, 94% effective, which is phenomenal. They have been produced under Operation Warp Speed, and they have, in an unprecedented timeframe, they have vaccinated 30,000 to 45,000 individuals in each of these trials. And at the end of those, they've shown data that they are very effective. Now, one thing we will all be faced with in this room in coming weeks is the opportunity to receive one of the many vaccines that we're talking about. And as we move forward through this, in coming weeks, you'll be receiving a lot of information about the various vaccines, from your doctor, from Net Health, from the state, from CDC. There'll be several vaccines, five are in queue now, the three will be following this shortly. They have different dosages, day one, and day 21, day one, and day 28. There's one vaccine that's a one-day dose. So, it will be confusing. A lot of people will be wondering about the safety profile of these vaccines, but you'll be re-receiving a lot of information about that coming forward. And I think it's our responsibility, the Health Department and others, to clarify that information when it, when it does, when these vaccines are released. Let me just kind of walk through briefly what happens at the FDA to help, to approve these vaccines. The Pfizer vaccine and the Moderna vaccine have applied to FDA for what's called Emergency Use Authorization, or EUA. And this is just a procedure where if FDA sees a vaccine has effectiveness and safety, they will circumvent some of the normal steps toward approval, if the demand is there, and if it's deemed that it would be very advantageous to the population and individuals to receive that vaccine. That will be happening for the Pfizer vaccine on December 10th, next Tuesday, I believe, and for the Moderna vaccine, right on its heels, on December 17th. They will be, there's a committee, the, it's called the Vaccine and Related Biological Products Advisory Committee, or VERBAC for short, that's advising, an independent group of scientists advising FDA to say, hey, this vaccine looks like it's safe enough and effective enough, we need to be pushing it out to the public, or not. And that will be happening these two respective days. If those are approved, and it is anticipated they will be, they receive that Emergency Use Authorization. Then, in a short time, I have one or two days later, it could be a little bit more, that information will go to CDC. It's called the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, which approves all our vaccines, like flu, like measles, pertussis vaccine. And once they give the thumbs up, or thumbs down, and it's anticipated it will be a thumbs up, then vaccine can begin. So, potentially, and probably, I would say for certain groups, vaccine will probably be here before the end of the month, and for certain populations. Let me talk a little bit more about that. This is a busy slide, I won't go through every bullet, but these are some of the groups that CDC, Department of State Health Services, Net Health are looking at to be priority receivers of the vaccine, once it's released. Essential workers, like healthcare workers on the front lines now, doing a great job, offering them protection. First responders, people in education, people at increased risk, if they're over 65, have underlying medical conditions, like diabetes, hypertension, et cetera. Long-term care facility residents are high on the list. You can see other ones, people attending colleges, people in racial and ethnic minority groups, and people with limited access to services. That's kind of the universe of priority populations. Now, what's happening as we speak is there's a committee, the Expert Vaccine Advisory Panel at DSHS, providing updates and guidance and recommendations to Commissioner Hellerstadt of the Texas Department of State Health Services, on who these initial groups should be. And here's the first wave of groups that have been deemed as a priority group for that very first vaccine, that should be coming out toward the end of the month. They are all related to the healthcare profession, hospital staff, long-term care staff, as you can see, EMS providers, home healthcare workers, healthcare workers in outpatient settings, direct care staff in freestanding emergency clinics, community pharmacy staff who are vaccinating or testing, public health staff, like those who work with Mr. Roberts and other health departments across the state. Funeral home workers, and medical examiners, and school nurses are on this list, too. So, these are, with the limited vaccine that's coming out, after EUA approval, after CDC approval, it'll be pushed out directly from the manufacturer to receiving points throughout the state. These will be the first groups that will be targeted to receive that vaccine toward the, could be as early as a couple of weeks, but I think before the end of the month. Now, as time goes by, other groups will be prioritized, recommendations will be made to the Commissioner, and other groups, like the one on the, like the ones on the previous slide, will be added to that, and they will be allowed to receive the vaccine, too. So, it will be an incremental process, matching priority groups and the supply vaccine that will be coming in. So, it's a hopeful time, I think, with the vaccine. I think if, I've said before, if we could, there's a concept called herd immunity. If we could vaccine, if 60% or so of the population either had the vaccine or have had COVID illness, that would create what we call herd immunity, where we would significantly dampen the spreadability of COVID-19, if you can put it that way. And it would significantly blunt the spread throughout the community. So, that number, 60, 65%, 70%, if we could effectively vaccinate that many of the population, if you, and if the additive effect of the cases plus the vaccination are 60 to 70%, we'd be in a good place, I think, moving forward. So, George, I'll turn it back over to you on that note.
Before Dr. McGahay sits down, are there questions for him about his portion of the presentation?
I have, if it were going to order, I'm sure we have some, because we're all following this closely. Thank you again for your service today.
Sure.
Welcome. The flu vaccine, I know, my understanding is that, you know, we almost guess, because there are several strains of flu, which vaccine is likely to be effective as that flu rolls in this year. Are they anticipating these vaccines, I mean, obviously, they're, you'll, to affect one virus, is that going to be, anticipated to be an annual event, or until it, you know, do they have estimates? I know it's a brand-new vaccine, so we don't know how long it's going to last, but just curious about that.
That's an excellent, that's an excellent question. I don't have the definitive answer. I don't think it will be like the flu vaccine, where every year, you have to go and get a different strain. I mean, we can't say with certainty. I think some studies are coming out, antibody studies, which show protection after infection, and protection after the vaccine, and they show some longer-lasting protection. There'll be studies ongoing after receipt of the vaccine, to see how long the protection lasts. You know, the influenza vaccine, and influenza is sort of a unique virus, and personally, I don't anticipate it will be like that, where we'll have to go back in every year for a shot. But I can't tell you with certainty. I think we get started on that.
Just curious, I've not read, so I would just, what they're thinking about.
We'll get started on this.
I know, we've got to see how long the virus, the exact, fell on earth, so.
Exactly. We're in uncharted waters, but I hope it's not like that, for sure.
Great, thank you, sir.
You bet.
Commissioner Ward asked my question, that's what I was going to ask, was it going to be a lifetime thing, like the shingles, or the, or was it going to change, you know, for, you know, it'd be kind of bad to get two vaccinations a year, and then, you know, you only get a 50% chance of hitting, whether you hit the right strain or not. And so, I didn't know if it's going to be like that or not.
Excellent question. No one knows with certainty. I certainly, based on the information I've received, I don't anticipate that will be the case. I certainly, if you have two doses, you won't need two doses every year, you might just need a booster. But time will tell.
Still the same thing, is another shot.
Yeah. It really is, yeah. I don't anticipate that will happen, I mean, I think it would be several years out if you had to.
You know, it'd be, it'd be great if it's just, you know, you could go get these two shots and be done for, for the rest of your life, that would be good, you know, but obviously, I don't know how long flu shots take to make, or whatever, I think they study it each year, but...
They do.
I'd give thanks to President Trump and all of his Warp Speed team, because 10 months, and you get a vaccine that's 94, 95% effective, supposedly. I'm not a scientist or anything, but that sounds amazing.
It is amazing.
I mean, you know, the FDA and everybody involved, so.
It is amazing. It's unprecedented, for sure.
Other questions for Dr. McGahay?
And with that being said, it has been a short period of time, and I, clinical trials, 30 years. I'm just worried, side effects, once you start taking the drug, you never know what's going to happen. I mean, we're going to do the EUAs, or we're going to be doing consent forms, I mean, how are we going to roll this out? There's so many questions.
There are a lot of questions, you bring up an excellent point, Commissioner Hampton, and that's, you echo voices of many in the community, and many in my community. I think we're relying on some expert scientists on the advisory panel at FDA looking at this. There's another layer of science at CDC evaluating this, and they are trying to balance the risk versus the benefit of the vaccine, in the face of 260,000, you know, fatalities in the United States. So, it will be monitored closely. We, as clinicians, will be reporting any side effects through the existing systems now to CDC. They will be cataloged and monitored, so they can be flagged if we're seeing certain side effects moving forward with the vaccine. But, you know, individuals will have that decision to make, and I am hoping that, I mean, I think, based on what I've seen, I think it would be safe, and looks like very effective, but individuals will have to make that decision. And we hope to provide as much information for you and anyone else out there moving forward as we can.
That's good, because there are a lot of concerns and a lot of questions.
Yeah, for sure.
Mr. Roberts, why don't you come on up? Are there questions for Mr. Roberts on his portion of the presentation?
Yeah, a couple more things I wanted to say, Judge, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
First off, that Dr. McGahay is a, is part of the Commissioner Hellerstadt's Expert Vaccine Panel, so we're very fortunate to have him, and he's been able to give us firsthand information here, as we've gone through all this. Just a couple other things here, want to share with you. Contact tracing, you know, that's been a term, we continue our efforts with contact tracing, and it's important that people understand what action they need to take if they are COVID-19 positive, and also alert their own contacts. The community at large now has, you know, we started this saying, whole thing, contact tracing, we didn't really quite know what that was, and I think everybody, the word "contact tracing" is a very well-known term to everybody now. So, people are taking their own initiative, if they are positive, to let other people know that what's going on. And our staff has worked with area businesses, manufacturers, schools, government entities, to train appropriate staff on how to do their own contact tracing. to train appropriate staff on how to do their own contact tracing. So we've had help from the Texas Workforce Commission, we've hired our own people, we've had the Smith County Medical Society that have helped us, and also the UT's Toddler School Pharmacy have helped us with doing contact tracing. Testing, local providers have access to testing, but they require that you have the symptoms of COVID-19. And again, let's go back through the symptoms again, just refresh everybody's memory. Everybody remembers fever, cough, and shortness of breath, right? Well, that now is fever, chills, cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, fatigue, muscle or body aches, headache, newly acquired loss of taste or smell. It seemed like everybody I've talked to that's had this, they lost their taste or smell. Loss of appetite, sore throat, nasal congesting, runny nose, diarrhea, vomiting, nausea. A lot of it sounds like normal GI stuff. It also sounds like normal East Texas allergies, doesn't it? So it can be very confusing what's going on. You could, this, you may have COVID-19, you may think you have the normal East Texas allergies of the season right now. And so we do have a free test site at the Toddler Senior Center, nineteen fifteen Garden Valley. It's open Monday through Friday from nine AM to four PM. It was not open last week, but it is open this week and up until Christmas. And I see my friend Ralph Caraway in the back of the room. Unbelievable job at St. Louis Baptist Church when he hosted it during the month of October. He was just incredible. And actually, I go, I tried to go to these testing sites myself at least once. This young man greeted me at the door, walked me through the process himself, and the staff was just, you know, the staff was just thrilled, and the Texas Department of Emergency Management. So hats off to Reverend Caraway and your staff for all you did during that whole process. We've talked about the hospitals, and we keep on our communication with the hospitals, remain in constant communication with them. Our EOC is planning to meet again on Thursday, and we'll have the hospitals on the phone line to talk to them. But we try to get up-to-date information. We like to not only see the numbers, but we also want to hear directly from their mouths what's actually happening there. School update, just quickly with that, I think that, you know, our schools have done a great job. I looked at the numbers yesterday through November fifteenth, and, you know, the number, you know, I think all of us, when schools started again, we all thought that the numbers would be pretty significant. And really, they had, the schools have done an excellent job. They have owned this thing, they have done the contact tracing, they've done a phenomenal job of working through this, a very, very difficult situation. I think our colleges have done a good job. And yeah, there's been a few schools in our area that have had to close for a couple of weeks. There's been, you know, football games, basketball games that have been canceled, but I think on the most part, they've done a phenomenal job. So hats off to the schools and the community at large for really making that work. Again, thank you, Smith County. Thank you for letting us come here and give this report. This is helpful, you know, not only for us, but we want to do this for your information, but we also like to do this for the community at large. So thank you for allowing us this opportunity. Thank you, Judge Moran, and Marshal Jay Brooks, for Casey Murky, for the hours that you spend in the Emergency Operations Center, along with the extra phone calls, texts, and, you know, Judge Moran and I, I thought we knew each other pretty well nine months ago, and we've gotten to know each other pretty well over the last few months.
I've seen you more than my wife, probably, in the last nine months.
And a special shout out to my staff in Net Health, they've just done a phenomenal job over the last time.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, I have a question. So much focus has been put on the vaccine and everything, but back to testing, is it still, where, you know, you had to have that thing run up your nose? So many people I talk to, it's very, very uncomfortable, uncomfortable. And is it, have we got something that's, we can get a result back quicker and where they don't have to do that up your nose? Or we're making any headway on that?
Yeah. So the free testing site that I mentioned at the Toddler Senior Center, it's an oral swab. It's like going, they stick a Q-tip in your mouth, and they swab it around your mouth for about roughly thirty seconds or so, and that's a lot less, it's a whole lot less uncomfortable. I've had the nasal swab as well.
There's still a two-day turnaround on that, right?
Still two-day turnaround. The antigen test is a quicker turnaround test, that's that one, the probable, you can get a quicker result. It is a nasal swab, and I don't think that they're going quite as, and Dr. McGee can give you some more direct information on that.
You said it right, I think, and most, usually, they don't have to go with the probe all the way back to the throat through the nose. It's usually the anterior aspect of the nostrils, or increasingly, we're using saliva-based tests now, just in the mouth, and able to do it from that. So it's not like it used to be.
And it can be done, gets results quick, and there.
The antigen tests, you can usually get those within about thirty minutes or so. The PCR test, the other modality.
How accurate are those?
Well, the antigen, we were talking about.
No, I mean, the antigen testing and face of what we're facing now is very, is very good. PCR is kind of the gold standard, but the quick test is showing to be very reliable, too.
Okay, thank you.
George, I would ask if you get an opportunity, if we could get another testing site here in Toddler, if we could just have two, maybe one on the east side of town, to go along with the one on the north side of town.
Okay. We'll talk, we'll reach out to him, because the numbers are really, I know Reverend Caraway, you were having upwards, I think, your last day, you had almost three hundred people that came through there, I think. So they're, they're pretty busy. They're pretty busy.
I think we need more than one testing site.
Okay, and I know that you can, CVS on our website, our nethealthcovid19.org, there are, we do list out where you can get one. CVS, you can go to CVS and get, there's several locations.
My husband used CVS.
You have?
Yeah, we've used CVS.
How did that work for you?
It worked great for him.
I think you had to go up to the, I was asking, I was in CVS.